Mr. Mayor, we are up and available for live streaming, so we are good to go at 6 o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you, Andrew.
Yep.
Mayor, can you see me?
Yes, I can. How are you, Roger?
I'm good. How are you tonight?
Are you still down in Florida?
No, we are back. We've been back for about 10 days.
Well, welcome back.
Thank you.
Now, Andrew, before we get started, right now I'm seeing the agenda. Is that correct?
Yeah, I have the agenda shared because we are streaming. We are streaming out live, so I figured rather than just a rotating view of everybody's face, we'd share the agenda out. So whenever you're ready, I'll take that down and we can start the meeting.
All right, I am ready. I'm going to call this meeting to order and welcome everybody to the commission meeting, and I'm going to ask Andrew at this time to go over the procedures so that everybody is familiar with them. Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so as part of our ability to have electronic meetings here in the state of Michigan, we do have a few procedures. Public comment is available for those using the Zoom meeting or attending via the Zoom meeting. During appropriate public comment times, you'll be asked to use raise hand feature. If you're on a PC, you can access that. You may see it right at the bottom of your screen. If you don't, if you open the participants tab at the bottom of your screen, there should open a column up, and at the very bottom of that column will be the raise hand feature. That would be how you'd wish to be acknowledged for a public comment. Once you're acknowledged, I will allow you to speak via the audio system. If you're on a phone, you can use the raise hand feature by typing in star nine. All of our votes for the meeting by the city commission will be done via a roll call vote, again, as part of the procedures for this. If you are wishing to have the meeting in closed caption, that is available on our YouTube stream. There's a link available. If you're in the Zoom meeting, there's a link to the YouTube stream available at the top left of your screen, and it's also out and available as part of our agenda and in various places, including our Facebook page, if you need that. I think that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. Can we say the pledge allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of Washington, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. Mr. Rhodes, roll call, please. Oops, I'm sorry. Invocation. Tonight's invocation, I've asked Commissioner Mullins to give our indication. Jeff, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Not very loud, but I can hear you.
You can hear me, though, huh?
Yes.
Okay. Let's pray. Our loving heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking your blessing and help as we remotely are gathered tonight. We pray for your guidance in matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Please help us to work together, encourage one another, and to challenge each other to reach higher and farther and to be the best that we can. We ask this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Jeff. Roll call, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Mullins.
Present.
Commissioner Burr.
Here.
Commissioner Klinger.
Here.
Commissioner Wiki.
Here.
Commissioner Malone.
Here.
Commissioner Littman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Good.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Here. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the proclamation's presentations. First item is Arbor Day proclamation, and John and I are going to team up on this. I am going to read the proclamation, and then John has a few comments on this Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, John Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperatures, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, be it resolved, as mayor of the city of Sturgis, I do hereby proclaim April 24, 2020, as Arbor Day in the city of Sturgis, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Signed, Mayor Robert Heil. John?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. One of the, in order to be a Tree City USA, there are four steps that the foundation requires. One of them is the proclamation that you just read. As a part of that, there's also an Arbor Day observance, which has been canceled this year because of the COVID. Usually there, we go out to the schools and talk to them about trees. So there's that requirement. We need to have a tree board or department, and we were meeting that requirement with a forester that's hired through Plant Growth Management Services. We need to have a tree care ordinance, which we do. There's a section there for care of trees and a community forestry program, and the requirement is that we have an annual budget of $2 per citizen per year. Our budget all in for line clearance and street maintenance is $45 per capita, so we're well beyond that. But if we look at just the amount of money that's on a per capita basis for street trees, it's $13.64. So those are the four requirements, and thank you very much.
Thank you, John. The next item on, under our proclamation, proclamation is a presentation. I believe it's a presentation for SPS Solar Power Research Team Presentation. Again, on your agenda, Mike was supposed to do this, but Mike asked me to introduce Dr. Art Ebert, our superintendent for Sturgis Public Schools, Dr. Ebert. Please, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to share my screen here for the presentation. All right. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Excellent. So first of all, we would like to thank the city commission for having us this evening, and I commend you for being a green city with all the trees. It aligns with our thinking here, too, and commend you for that. We started our journey back in January where we asked Sturgis High School students if they wanted to be part of our solar power research team. And we, I have some of the responses from the students here that I'm going to read. So students said things like, "Sustainable energy is a very interesting topic to me, and the team could help me on my pursuit to an engineering degree." Another student said, "I believe solar power or any other non-fossil fuel gases is a necessary advancement for our district to move forward and thrive. It is an immensely cleaner alternative than fossil fuels." Another student said, "I would like to someday design spaces that opt for eco-friendly resources. Career pathway is architect designer, so being part of this team would be an awesome way to start." The last student that I'm going to read said, "I would like to join the district's solar power research team for many reasons. Among those are my constant feelings about nature and how if we aren't able to come up with a solution, we may not have it as we know it for long. I would like also to join because I want to do something for my community." So those are just a sampling of the responses. They were all spectacular. Along our journey, we've conducted research. We've met with solar power vendors and met with city staff as well. So we're here today to present our findings and make a recommendation to you. So, whoops. So our overview today is we're going to talk about why solar power. Why is the district exploring solar power? Share with you our research. Celebrate you, the electric city, and you are a leader in renewable energy, and we're going to talk about that. Go through our options and then share with you our request.
Why solar power? Ways it's environmental is solar power is very clean, and it also would reduce our carbon footprint as a whole, as a community. It's instructional, but it makes the students be able to make a change in their community, which many other cities around us don't give their students that opportunity. In ways it's financial would be the money that you spend on the solar power, like in the long run, you'd be able to spend on other renewable resource projects, school support programs, and like other staffs, including teachers.
So when we went through the project, we talked about when you put data down, you need to show where that you, the source that you got it from. So you'll see on the slide at the bottom. Here, this information was taken from energy.gov. So we talked about the benefits of solar power, and some of those benefits were it curbs pollution by decreasing air pollution, better health outcomes by reducing pollutants that can prevent then prevent unnecessary healthcare costs and save lives, and then also mitigate climate change by reducing our carbon footprint.
These are some of the solar power trends that have changed in the past 10 years. First, the amount of solar jobs approached 250,000 in the United States, more than doubling from 2012. Next, the share of total electrical generation for solar went from 0.1% to more than 2.5% today. Finally, the cost per watt to install a solar system changed from $5.86 in 2010 to less than $1.50 today.
Roughly 3% of the city's energy comes from the hydroelectric power station on the St. Joseph River. Roughly 97% of the city's energy is purchased from American Electric Power. Currently, the city is in the process of transitioning away from this purchase agreement with American Electric Power, and will start purchasing five-year blocks of power agreements. Lastly, the city of Sturgis has a six-megawatt dual fuel generator.
As you may know, Sturgis is building a solar project that will take place on the northeast and southeast corners of Bojan Road and M66. This project has a nominal rating of 15 megawatts or 15,000 kilowatts. The project would power approximately 3,900 homes in the first year. This project is estimated to produce 28,495 megawatt hours annually with a 0.5% degradation rate. So after 25 years, it would produce 25,265 megawatt hours. The vendor developing this project is Prism Power Partners, and the cost for the first contract year would be $44.90, and after 25 years, the cost would be $72.22 per megawatt hour.
When we were exploring options, we landed on three main options that would be feasible. The first option would be scaling our projects to our summer usage. So as you know, we have the most sun in the summer, but that's also the time that school is closed. So, so that we're not just producing power and then not using it or giving it away, we would then, the first option would be to scale the project to the summer usage that we have. So the pros to that is it would be a smaller project, so it'd be easy for the district to complete, and it would be low risk being a small project. The disadvantages of that is it would really limit the scope of the size that we could tackle, and then it wouldn't provide the environmental or financial benefits that we're looking for.
The second option we could pursue would be to enter into an agreement with the city of Sturgis so they can purchase any solar energy we make. The advantages of this option would be that the school would get paid for all solar energy produced, and we would have the ability to complete a larger solar project unlike option number one. Two disadvantages are that the energy produced would not be credited towards the district's energy consumption, and that the city of Sturgis already has a substantial solar portion in their portfolio due to the Bojan Road project.
Our third and final option is to negotiate a win-win net metering agreement between the city of Sturgis and the public school district. This would allow for a larger solar project compared to option number one, and excess solar energy that the school has produced can be sold back to the city. The issue with this currently is the city doesn't allow net metering, and the city of Sturgis would have to buy solar energy produced beyond what the district consumes.
We've reviewed the most recent invoices from the city for Sturgis High School, and roughly we pay 13.3 cents per kilowatt hour. Based on the information that we've, that's reviewed on the website, energy.gov, the average cost of producing solar continues to decrease each year. Currently, the rates are 6 cents per kilowatt hour for utility scale, 8 cents per kilowatt hour for commercial usage, and 10 cents per kilowatt hour for residential use. There are roughly 40 communities in Michigan with public power. The following are a few of the communities who currently allow net metering: Grand Haven, Hillsdale, Marshall, Traverse City, and Zeeland.
We would like to conclude this proposition by making a recommendation. This team as a whole has agreed to inform you. We've analyzed all three of these options, given the pros and cons of each, and have concluded to recommend the city follow option number three, which is to authorize the city of Sturgis staff to negotiate a win-win net metering agreement between the city of Sturgis staff and Sturgis Public Schools. Option number three was the best option. We agreed was the most fiscally responsible plan for the district in order to install a sizable solar power system. We do understand that the city has its best interests at heart. However, we also believe that this proposed solar project will have many positive effects in the long term. Given the city does follow this recommendation, not only are we predicting good outcomes and environmental benefits as well as economic ones, but also a recognizable change in the community's awareness. In our first meeting, the team was quick to agree the reasons why we were all doing this is because we all feel strongly about making the world a better place. If you think about it, our team is roughly made of about seven students. Therefore, if we can get the community to be more informed about renewable energy, we can surely make the world a better place. This takes time and effort, but any little or big step we make now will certainly not be useless in the future. We would also like to take the time to thank you all for letting us have your valuable time. We really look forward to working with you all. It has been a great honor to have had the chance to express our thoughts about this important issue with the city of Sturgis. Thank you.
So thank you once again for allowing us to present to you this evening. If you do, let's talk about our next step. So if, if you were to authorize the city staff to negotiate a win-win net metering agreement with the district, our next steps would then be is this team of students would take to the, our Board of Education, a recommendation that we put out in RFP to find a vendor to work with us on a large solar project. The team of students would then interview those vendors for the solar project, and then the team of students and myself and Mr. Sterling would also then go to, back to the Board of Education with our recommended vendor to start the project. So we'll take questions, or we'll talk to the city staff later. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Ebert, real quick, can you introduce the young people that read through this program for us?
Absolutely. How about, how about each of you, so that they can see you, say your name and what grade you're in? So let's start with Brecken.
Brecken, Richard, 10th grade.
And how about we go to Leo?
My name's Leo right now, and I'm in, I'm a freshman right now.
Matt?
Matthew Toner, 10th grade.
Alex?
Alex Arroyo, freshman.
Jacob?
Jacob Hall, 11th grade.
And Brenda?
I'm Brenda, and I'm also in 11th grade.
Oh, and I can't forget Mr. Sterling.
Mr. Sterling, I'm not in high school anymore, but...
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions from the commission? Any commissioners for the, these young folks and/or Dr. Ebert or Mr. Sterling? John, did you raise your hand?
I did.
And I noticed, Commissioner Klinger, I'll be right to you next, but Vice Mayor.
I just would like to ask John Griffith if at some future meeting, near future meeting, he couldn't bring to us a brief explanation of the net metering so that I have a full understanding of what that is for our city.
I can do that.
Thank you, John.
Commissioner Klinger.
I actually wanted to echo that same question that John had, but also just congratulate the kids. This is a very impressive presentation. You know, I appreciate their enthusiasm for a change in our environmental impacts around us as well as our energy usage. It's really, it's a really cool step forward, and I gladly support this myself.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mullins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Same thing as John. I was going to ask for a presentation or some more information on net metering and just kind of a little about myself. And to echo Commissioner Klinger, awesome job by the, by the kids here.
I can understand what Jeff is saying.
Yeah, we appear to have some internet connection issues with Commissioner Mullins.
Jeff, can you still hear me? Would you repeat what you, your, your statement, please?
I don't know if you can hear me because my thing is saying that their speaker is not working. I'm not sure what's going on.
Now, I can hear you.
Oh, you can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Well, basically, I was just congratulating the kids again, the same, and talking about the net metering and wanting to learn more about that. And I was asking, either from Mr. Ebert to Sterling or any of the high schoolers, where they anticipate putting this at?
I think I understand the question to be, where do you anticipate locating solar panels? We would obviously work with the selected vendor on the best location or locations. The most likely location would be on the roof at Sturgis High School.
Was that your, was that your, your question, Jeff? Pretty much? Okay. Thank you, sir. Again, I congratulate these kids. They did a fantastic job on this. I look to hear from John on, on the metering question and before get back to the school to see what we can do here. Before I close, any other comments from either Dr. Ebert or Mr. Sterling or any of the kids? Any other comments?
Just thank you once again, and our interactions always with the city staff, they've been outstanding. So thank you, everyone.
I just wanted to say the same thing. Thanks for, Mr. Hughes and Mr. Griffith for showing up at a couple of the meetings and sharing some information. So thank you on your behalf to help us along the process as well.
All right. Well, thank you all, and we look forward to hopefully working with you on this project. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the visitor's section, and because we're in the Zoom meeting, Andrew, can you tell, is there anybody in our audience that would like to bring something to the commission that is not on our agenda at this point?
All right. So as the mayor suggested, for those attending via Zoom meeting, if you do wish to make a public comment at this time, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Once again, if you are calling in only, and I don't believe we have anybody who's doing that today, but if you are, it is star nine in order to raise your hand. Take just a second to wait and see if anybody has a question.
Okay.
I see no hands, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. Then we will move on to the item. The next item on our agenda is the approval of our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve our agenda? I think Skip is trying to say something, but he's muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, move for approval of tonight's agenda for May 13, 2020. Ask presented.
Support.
Was that you, John?
It was.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Littman, support by Vice Mayor Good. All in favor. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr. Yes. Commissioner Burr. Okay. Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Hi.
Hi.
Commissioner Malone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
And Mayor Hile?
Yes, thank you. Moving on down to the next item would be the approval or consent agenda, please. Do I have a motion? I move for approval of tonight's uh consent agenda also for Wednesday, May 13th, 2020. Yes, presented.
Support.
Yeah, a motion by Commissioner Littman uh and support by Commissioner Klinger to for consent consent agenda, all in favor. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Klinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Burr?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki?
Yes.
Commissioner Littman?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Malone?
Yes.
Commissioner Mullins?
Yes.
And Mayor Hile?
Yes, thank you again all. The next item on our agenda is the unfinished business, the COVID-19 update. Uh, City Manager Hughes.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple of quick updates. Um, and then we have a proposed recommendation for you. Uh, so as you know, we furloughed or work shared seven full-time employees. That was effective. Um, a second. Um, so these are positions that are either unable to work or impacted. Um, our intention, of course, is to bring those employees back when we can. And I think our next critical date is May 28th, so hopefully we'll we'll know something soon. Um, the other item I wanted to check in on is fireworks. Uh, so as time has progressed. Um, more events are being canceled. And I'm not necessarily suggesting that we cancel fireworks, however. Um, I think we potentially could have, you know, a situation where where we might have to do that. Um, as I mentioned last time, uh, the fundraising is a little bit uncertain. I'm not sure how that really plays out. I think. It could be supported or um maybe uh people are less likely to support fundraising. We pay for the majority of fireworks through community fundraising. We get support from. A few of our surrounding townships and uh the city provides uh. About $3,000 a year, just depending on how fundraising goes. The cost is about $15,000. Last year we did an $18,000 show. Uh, as I I think I mentioned last time. Um, if we purchase fireworks, they're they would be good for the following year. So that's that's not necessarily a concern. Uh, more so is it an event we're able to have? Uh, the tentative date. Uh, that we've discussed with the fireworks company is July 2nd. That's a Thursday. So they were already booked for July 3rd and 4th. We, I believe, would have been. Uh, holding fireworks on the 27th at the end of uh Sturgis Fest, but. Of course, that changed with their rescheduling. So we would be looking at signing a contract. For uh July 2nd, which I think works out well, uh, because some people may have the third off of Friday, so. Um, I don't think that's, I don't think that's a bad day. Uh, but I wanted to check in and see if you had any other thoughts or concerns.
Okay, Michael, um, I know we have a motion on this uh update and it was talking about utility disconnects. Do you want to go over that? Before we ask for I ask for questions or a motion?
I suggest we just discuss fireworks and then we can turn it over to uh City Clerk Treasurer Ken Rhodes.
Oh, that's what you're gonna. Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Uh, Commissioner Wiki does.
Uh, just a comment. I I know that uh myself as as well as many others are looking for some type of normalcy. And um to be able to celebrate Independence Day together. Um, you know, even if we're social distancing, I I think would be a big win for our city. Uh, so my recommendation would be to 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 go for it. If we have to cancel, um, then so be it, but um I I I tend to be an optimist and would love to stick with it.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Vice Mayor Good?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um. Question for Mike Hughes and then a comment. Uh, Manager Hughes, if we sign. The contract for July 2 and then need to cancel, is is there a penalty clause?
I I don't think there's a penalty clause. We would just be required to purchase the fireworks and. Um, what we're told by Wolverine is that we could use that uh some date in the future. And which could be as far as the next year.
Does Wolverine then store the fireworks for us?
I believe so.
Or do we have to take possession?
I think we're gonna keep them at the Public Services Building.
Alright.
I'm just kidding. I I think they they'll hold on to them.
Okay, um, then a comment, Mr. Mayor, if I might, um. As Commissioner Wiki indicated, uh, he's looking for some form of normalcy. And he would think that the celebration of the Independence Day. Uh, that which started our constitutional experiment here in the United States of America. Um, I for one uh favor any and most forms of civil disobedience. Uh, I know that uh our city attorney might not agree with me on some issues, but. Um, I would like to. Talk to our Public Safety Director. And say to him that if uh an individual in the city of Sturgis decided that. Governor Whitmer's restrictions were um less than sensible. Since I can't buy a new sofa, but I can go out to Walmart and mix with the people. I think that uh if the furniture store wished to open, I'd like to see that at least our local cons- councils wouldn't uh. Be running in there to arrest them. And uh, so as a commissioner, I encourage those individuals within our city. That wish to practice civil disobedience, feel free to do so. Uh, that's my comment with regard to the uh latest update on COVID-19. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for my time on the soapbox.
Thank you, John. Uh, would either Roger or our our Public Safety Director like to comment?
Well, can I can I just finish up on fireworks?
Sure.
I, if for some reason that type of gathering isn't allowed under an executive order. I I think probably what would happen is that Wolverine, I believe that they're licensed by the state. So they're probably not, I mean, I haven't talked to him to see if they're interested in civil disobedience, but. My guess is because they're licensed and regulate regulated by the state, they may not, so. Um, but I think uh Vice Mayor Good is speaking to a greater issue and I'll let um, maybe we should have the city attorney. Talk first and then Public Safety Director can uh add.
Roger?
I'm up, huh?
Yeah.
Couple of issues that have come up recently, uh. Deal with uh some lawsuits and some formal action. Uh, challenging the, you know, the effectiveness of the governor's uh renewed emergency orders and the stay-at-home orders. Um, the primary issue that has been raised is whether or not. Uh, she properly uh extended the stay-at-home orders. Um, beyond um the initial period of time. Uh, the there are a couple statutes that apply with respect to her authority. Uh, one of the statutes indicates that um. Yeah, she can extend uh beyond 28 days without uh affirmative the support from the legislature. They did that once. Um, uh, but uh the second time period, I believe, uh expired at the end of April. Uh, so there's a question uh as to whether or not the the current order is in fact uh legal. Um, the Attorney General has issued an opinion that it is. Um, and uh, I think until we have an indication from a court. Um, that basically is the law of the land. So at this point, her orders uh are are deemed effective. Uh, questions that come into play are uh what enforcement action, if any, a uh. Municipality or state police or uh sheriff's department will take. Um, each department has discretion as to what laws and under what circumstances uh they're gonna uh. Um, enforce those laws. Um. It's my understanding that in the city, uh currently, if there is a complaint uh regarding, for example, uh improper social distancing. Uh, the the police department will uh have a discussion with the individuals in an effort to get them into compliance. I don't believe we have ever issued a citation uh regarding a violation. Um, uh, to the best of my knowledge, there has not been any cases involved where. Uh, you know, business has opened up in uh in defiance of the governor's order. Um, it's my understanding that if that were to happen, uh. Most likely, the local police department would not get involved other than on a case-by-case basis. And if there was a severe health issue that became apparent, uh, there might be more action, but in general, um, I think it's a matter of trying to. Encourage compliance, uh, but without any firm enforcement. Uh, Director Smith, I don't know if I've uh reflected properly in terms of where we are at this point in time or not.
I think you did a fantastic job, but I can take anything more specific from the Vice Mayor or any other commissioners if they'd like.
Any uh specific questions for uh Public Safety Director Smith? Uh, I think John raises his hand, waved at me. John?
You're on mute, John.
John's on mute.
Yes, a question for Director Smith. Uh. As our city attorney indicated, uh, you might be called upon to encourage a compliance. But without uh undue force, I guess, would be one way to mention that. Um, so if in fact, uh, hair crafters decided to cut our manager's hair because it certainly could use it. Um, you might stop in and say, uh, stop cutting the manager's hair. And he would say, okay, as soon as I'm done, I'll have him leave. And everybody would be happy, including the manager. Is that about what would happen?
I can tell you so far, as as the city attorney said, we're taking it as a case-by-case, so we may do that, we may not. Um, if we have had any complaints on the executive order specifically for businesses. Um, we have one person that those funnel through. Um, they make contact with the business to find out if they fit under the executive order. Um, if they deem that they are, they send a letter, that type of thing in. Um, we haven't had anybody which I would call gross non-compliance, um, which would be similar to probably what your example. Um, what I can tell you is it's back to, I don't want to say that we won't enforce. I I think it's more of a case-by-case. And depending on what's going on, um, what I can tell you is I don't have any interest in um. Looking at anything that would be on uh educating and maybe a discussion at this point.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Wiki?
Uh, my my question, uh, Jeff. Do you feel like uh if you had to enforce um any of the executive orders? That it would be infringing on civil liberties or constitutional rights or anything like that? To where like you or any of the other police officers would feel torn?
That's a great question, and I think I've felt that way for about six weeks. Um. Again, as the city attorney pointed out, you know, we have opinions from the Attorney General of the state. Um, there's ongoing lawsuits. There are various opinions from different chiefs, directors, sheriffs um across the state. Uh, I mean, when you look at the scope of a state of an emergency and things like that. There are certain controls and that sort of thing that we have to um engage in and try to basically help people. And then, you know, it's back to is it that conflict where you feel like it's overstepping and that type of thing? And a lot of times, unfortunately, it comes down to a couple of things. You know, we all took an oath. Um, and uh we all hold that oath very sacred. So it does come down to a lot of times, you know, do you feel like it's uh infringing or if it's past that uh boundaries? So it's one of those that uh it's really, it's a tough balancing act. So that's back to um. What the uh city attorney said and what I said before, you know, we're trying to take it as a case-by-case. Um, but at this point, I don't have any interest in what we would call true enforcement.
So my my next question then would be either to city attorney or city manager. Um, is there any? Um. Would it be something legal to put on the books for us to make a motion? To be able to exempt our police officers from following uh the executive orders so they wouldn't have to um. So we wouldn't be putting themselves into a situation where they're torn, to where they could just do their job and not worry about uh those things.
I I'll handle that one, Jeff. Um. The easy answer is no, that would not be appropriate. The the city commission does not have the authority to. Issue directives to the police department or individual officers. Uh. Basically, a separation of of powers, if you will, but the individual police officers are the ones that are on the. On the line and they're the ones that would need to make an independent decision. Uh, based upon the facts that existed at that time, you know, in a particular case. Um, a concern I have is that if if the commission were to consider uh. Creating a um a situation where, you know, the city uh. Uh, basically was uh holding itself out as as not uh enforcing uh the governor's orders. Um. You you would not have any authority with respect to the sheriff's department, the state police, the attorney general. I would be very concerned that you would be creating a false sense of security by the individuals uh within the city that might. Uh, attempt to rely upon, you know, um, a a resolution uh from the commission that uh. You know, you're a safe haven and you can you can work here. Um, I I think that that would create more of a problem and potentially a greater risk of. Um. Confrontation over over the issues than than if we just let it sit the way it is. Um, deal with it on a case-by-case basis, recognize that we uh the we the city. Don't control what the governor does. Uh, the governor, you know, says controls uh what we do. Um, um, and uh I I would caution against uh any kind of a resolution that would create a false impression. That uh somehow we are a sanctuary city where our residents are protected because they they would not be.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, um, and if I could just add, I think we want to be careful to take away all discretion. From the police department um for some scenario we haven't thought of. Um, but I think I think it'd be fair to say that if we had a situation where there was. Um, you know, some uh really egregious uh violation of the EO. You know, we would have the ability to cite a misdemeanor, but I I think philosophically and and Director Smith, you can. Um, correct me or or add on, but I think this is, that would be the type of issue we would probably refer to the community health department. Or county prosecutor or AG's office. I don't, I don't think um our intent. Um. In in saving a caveat that we don't know every scenario that could happen, but I think generally our intent wouldn't.
in saving a caveat that we don't know every scenario that could happen, but I think generally our intent wouldn't be to enforce it with a misdemeanor or, you know, arresting somebody.
Vice Mayor, good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only wanted to say that Jeff Smith, your last answer, I believe, puts you in the category of running for office for the gubernatorial position. And to the city attorney, who said the city doesn't have, can't control what the governor does, that may be true, but as an electorate, we do have the power to let our governor know our displeasure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, John. I know this Mike brought up the Yes.
Excuse me, Commissioner Littman was trying to get your attention on the screen.
Okay, I'm sorry. Commissioner Littman. There you go, Skip.
Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, I've been watching with interest here between the powers of the state the powers of the federal government. And of course, the city has ordinances. But back in the day when I actually went to school and graduated and succeeded in getting at least one B from the late, great Martin Peck, who was also our city mayor for a couple of terms. But I believe if I remember right, he was teaching us in discussions that we have city ordinances. We have state statutes, but either one of those necessarily did not supersede federal laws or mandates. So when I, when I had to listen, because we were up in Baldwin, which was close to Lansing, I was almost breaking out with some of the decisions that were being made up there and conveyed by that person. And I just question some of the decisions that have been made with regard to fireworks or anything else. So I just wanted to share in that order from city to state to feds, where I rest is at the top, not at the bottom, because I don't think she's, I think that her wires are somewhat corroded with her enthusiasm. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Littman.
You're welcome.
Andrew, because we're talking about the fireworks here and stuff like that, I'm going to ask if there's anybody in our audience who has, and I want to come back to Commissioner Bur here in a second, but I'm going to have Andrew go and see if there's anybody in our audience has a comment.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. So once again, if anybody in the audience wishes to make a, make a public comment at this time, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom. This is for people attending via the Zoom meeting. We do have one dial in caller. Please use star nine to raise your hand if you wish to make a public comment on these topics. I believe we're covering both fireworks and just general, general issues with the, with the city. See no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. Commissioner Burr.
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mayor. I think with the the spread of the COVID virus will dictate whether or not we will have fireworks since it's already almost doubled in the last two weeks. We're up to 72 cases in St. Joe County now. If this warm weather produces more people gathering and the spread of the virus grows, that is going to dictate whether or not we're going to be able to gather socially. So I think maybe we should just put this on. Go ahead and plan for it, put it on a discussion for the next commission meeting and see where we are as far as the COVID-19 outbreak is and move on from there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burr. Commissioner Wiki.
One question for Mike. The fireworks, if we did have to cancel for July, would it be too late to then do fireworks at the Sturgis Fest in August?
I don't think so. The only issue would be, is there a conflict or do they already have something scheduled? And I think there's less scheduling conflicts in August. So I think we would have an opportunity to do fireworks then.
Okay, thank you. Mike, one quick question I've got. If we do not have fireworks and we've paid for them and the company keeps them, will we pay a storage fee for those? For that?
When we asked the question, they didn't mention anything about a storage fee, but I can double check.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor, good.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Can we agree by consensus to authorize Mike to contract for the July 2nd date?
I I don't think you can agree by consensus because of the virtual meeting rules, but I also don't need a formal motion.
You just, you got your instructions, what we're saying here, you'll check on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Understand.
Okay. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Vice Mayor, I just wanted to clarify, did I answer your question or would you like more specifics?
No, Jeff, you did a fine job of answering my questions. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Michael, didn't you, did you indicate that Mr. Rhodes is going to go over the utility disconnects, which has a motion tied to that?
That's correct, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Rhodes, would you like to go, would you please go over to the utility disconnect information?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll let anybody else, John, Holly, Mike, jump in to the extent they think they need to. In a normal year, sometime in March, well, probably late February, we start to prepare for our first disconnects, which can't happen until April 15th. And if you recall, PA 95 precludes us from doing that because we don't participate in the energy assistance program that's tied to that public act. So what we do, because obviously people have, some, some accounts are not being paid for some time and their balances are large, we actually send out a notice about a month ahead of time. Our normal time is 10 days ahead of time, and then we send another, a few days ahead of time. But in this case, for the first one, we send it out a month ahead of time. And I think for any initial disconnect for the year, we need to do that same procedure in order to provide our customers with the ability to go out and seek assistance from DHS or wherever they may be able to do that. In this case, we've been in contact with the, and when I say we, I mean, John has been in contact with the MMEA about what other municipalities are doing. We're also keeping track of what the Michigan Public Service Commission, which controls consumers AEP and the private entities, what they're doing. And today, no one has done any disconnects. So it seems prudent to go ahead and push that date to one that we can easily accomplish and contact our accounts. And so the proposal in the packet is to move that to the end of June, I believe, June 26th, which is a Friday. And because there are more unknowns than there are knowns, I can't tell you that we will immediately start disconnects right after June 26th. But we certainly will. It's something that we need to start thinking about. And it, and this will also, we've already been in contact with some accounts, but we're going to do that. We've created a list of people that have some past due balances. And we're going to go ahead and have our customer service representatives contact these folks and see what their situation is. Try to see if we can get some payment. Try to see if they can get assistance. And again, in this, all this will be monitoring what the state is doing, what the MMEA is suggesting, what the MPSC is suggesting and all those other things. So happy to take any questions. And again, if anyone else has something to add, John, or otherwise, please feel free.
Before I take questions, John, do you have anything to add to what Mr. Rhodes just said? Griffith?
No, at this point, I'll answer questions as they come up.
Okay, thank you. Holly? Is Holly with us, Andrew?
She is, yes.
I'm kind of, I'm kind of with you. No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, just take, you'll take questions. Okay, is there any question, does any of our commissioners have any questions for either Ken, John, or Holly on this proposal? Commissioner Burr?
Yes, is moving this back another month going to cross the city more? We moved it back once before.
Yes, so all we, we have already approved the delay of the late fees through June 30th. So this would not have any direct cost. You know, obviously, some people, you know, people's balances, if they're not paying, will continue to get higher, but the balances don't go away. So it's just a matter of timing of when we would collect the funds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burr. Vice Mayor, good.
Yes, a question for Ken Rhodes. Ken, do you have a threshold for those past dues for the contact that you're going to make? In other words, your customer service rep will contact everybody that is 250 and more in arrears or 500 in arrears. Do you have a threshold for that?
Well, in terms of contact, what we do is we create a list in terms of days. So how many days is that past due? At this point, we have created, generated a list that has 61 days past due. Now, some of those on that list, that 61st day, that oldest bill is 17 cents. We may or may not count, contact that person, you know, because there's not a lot of issue there. But we kind of limit it to just, you know, who, who is very much in the rear. And then obviously, look at the balance. Because again, even if, I saw a couple on the list, it's just kind of the way things hit, that somebody had an older bill, but they paid a middle bill and, you know, so, so we're going to take a look at it, but getting in contact, having personal contact, and it goes above and beyond what we're required to do. Our requirements are to send out simply two notices, which can both be letters. But I think in this case, our hope is to never disconnect anyone. But unfortunately, that does become the case. But if we are able to contact them and they are able to get assistance from DHS or they got a stimulus payment or something, then hopefully that upon such time that we may have to in fact disconnect, it's a very small list.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from the commission? If not, I'm going to ask Andrew to see if there's anybody in our audience that has a comment.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Once again, for anybody in the audience as an attendee in the Zoom meeting, if you have a question or comment for the city commission at this point, please use the raise hand feature. Again, for those dialing in on phone, that is star nine, in order to use the raise your hand feature. I'll take just a minute to allow anybody to raise their hand to be recognized. I see no one wishing to be recognized, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. If there are no further questions, I will take a motion on this issue.
Your Honor, this is Commissioner Burr. I move that the Sturgis City Commission postpone utility disconnections through June 26, 2020.
I'll support.
Yeah, the motion by Commissioner Burr, support by Commissioner Mullins. To postpone. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Littman?
Hi.
Commissioner Wiki?
Yes.
Commissioner Malone?
Yes.
Commissioner Burr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, good.
Yes.
Commissioner Mullins?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger?
Yes.
Mayor Heil?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We will move down now to our new business section. The first item on our agenda is the rezoning of B-C area properties. This will be the first reading. Will, are you, there you are, Will.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is the first reading for a proposed rezoning request for 18 properties in the central business area. 12 of the properties are City of Sturgis owned and the remainder are private properties. And if I can share my screen, I will kind of go around and just kind of explain the properties. Can everybody see that?
Not yet.
Not yet.
How about now?
Yep, there you go.
Oh, hop.
What a pretty
There it is.
I think it is.
All right, so here we, one through six here are all city-owned properties. This is the church next to the auditorium, the auditorium. Electric utilities, three vacant properties back there. These would be rezoned, be central business. Number seven is a parking lot across from the auditorium. Currently, it's R4. It'll be rezoned to central business. This here is another parking lot. It's actually split zone. There's a little chunk of R4 right here. It would actually be zoned, central business. Number nine, this is owned by Sturgis Bank and Trust. It's split zone. That's one parcel. It would all be zoned, central business. Number 10, this is City Hall building and the police department. Basically, again, it's split zoned, R4 BC. It'll be central business. 11 and 12, 11 currently right now is part of PDD2. It will be rezoned BC. It's currently owned by Tarden or GT Independence. Number 12 is GT Independence. It's a split zone parcel. It's R4 BC. It'll be rezoned BC. Once this is completed, they'll combine these two properties as well. As you know, they're doing an extensive amount of work over there. 13 is a city parking lot behind TC Appliance. That'll be rezoned BC. It's split zoned now. 14 is a single family residence. It'll be rezoned, central business. 15 is a city parking lot. It'll be rezone, central business. 16 is Community Mental Health Building, split zone. It's R4 BC. It'll be rezoned, central business. 17 is Central Bank and Trust. Right back here, there's a little bit of R4 that goes across the property. It's again, just split zoned. It'll be rezoned, central business. 18 is city parking lot. It's currently zoned, R4, be rezoned, central business. So all of the planning commission heard this April 21st, they recommend the rezoning. All of these are in in the way that the most recent future land use map was just adopted. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, are there any questions for Will? Vice Mayor, good. Your hand was up and then it disappeared. Do you have a question?
I do have a question. Thank you. I had it up and I thought maybe it didn't catch. For those of you that don't know, if you do the alt key and the letter Y, your hand will raise. Okay. For Will Pritchard, the Sturgis Public Schools building across the street of, across West Street, the Commons, did the planning commission and or your staff and master plan people look at that and wonder whether it wanted to remain R4 or swing into BC?
As part of the future land use, we have that zone public. So as, that's just, maybe in the future, we look at creating a zoning district that's just public where they kind of have their own zoning districts or they don't have a zoning requirement. So we did look at it as part of this zoning district change.
Okay, thank you. I just think that that building itself, were it to be abandoned by the school system, might in fact lend itself to a central business use and or an R4 use. So it's kind of a I don't know, an anomaly within that central business area. You know, had they not spent so much money on this building and turned it down, it would be public. Anyway. So that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Are there any other questions or comments for Will from the commission? At this time, I don't see any. Andrew, is there, would you ask the?
At this time, I don't see any. Andrew, is there, would you ask the, our audience if there's any questions or comments?
Sure. So once again, for audience members listening in, if you want to make a public comment on this agenda item, please use the raise your hand feature to be acknowledged. Once again, if you're dialing in, it's star nine to, to raise your hand. See no raised hands from attendees, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Andrew. Barry Cox, you have a, your hand is up. There you are, Barry, okay.
Yeah, good evening. Question for Will. What would be for, let's say, the, the one, basically the one house that's, that's part of this rezoning request? What would be the potential pros and or cons to that particular owner for that zoning to be changed to central business district?
You're talking number 14 over there by TC and Central, Community Mental Health?
Yes.
The current use of the house is just, it's kind of non-conforming use there. So nothing would change for him. Basically, and it helps his house be more conforming now as far as the, the building or structure itself because of the zero lot lines. So if somebody were to purchase that and wanted to turn it into a permitted use, the structure would be conforming in that point. So we have a use and a structures is, or a question that you're asking.
Thanks, Will.
Sure.
Thank you, Barry. Again, any more questions or comments for Will on this issue? Seeing none, I will take a motion.
This is Vice Mayor Good. I would move that the Sturgis City Commission consider this the first reading of an amendment to the zoning code, Article 3 pertaining to the zoning mass as presented.
Second.
John, I believe John made the motion and Commissioner Klinger seconded the motion. I will take roll call, please. Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Hi.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good.
Yes.
And Mayor Heil. Yes, thank you all. We'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is the purchase agreement for 405 Wenzel Avenue. And I think Michael's doing this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Included in your packet was a proposed purchase agreement for the sale of 405 Wenzel Avenue from the City of Sturgis to the Sturgis Neighborhood Program. This property was acquired by the city through, or from the county through the tax foreclosure process. The purchase price is based on the acquisition cost and then other holding costs like taxes, probably securing the building, any sidewalk or sidewalk removal or snow removal or lawn mowing. So those are all of our costs that we can, as part of the sale to Sturgis Neighborhood Program. And, oh, I think I saw that Monica was there and looks like.
I'm trying.
Okay, so she was, she's back. But Monica Smith is available if you have any questions about the project from SMP's perspective. Otherwise, we are recommending sale of 405 to Sturgis Neighborhood Program.
Monica, would you like to make any comments before we take questions from the commission?
What I can tell you is we're well into the process anticipating we would be able to purchase the property. You know, we visited one day with the commission, I think that's been a while ago, was that last fall? I'm, I'm not sure. And we have secured a contractor in the event that we would purchase it. We have financing and anticipating that project. And I think the only thing that needs to be completed yet, if this were to be approved, would be the title work.
All right, thank you, Monica. Any questions or comments for either Michael or Monica on this topic from the commission? Vice Mayor Good.
Yes, just a quick question for Monica. Now that contractors are back in the swing of things, is Ohio Port back under motion?
Went right back to work last Thursday, the first day that they could.
Okay, great, thank you.
And the project is really moving along. Everything's going really well. If you ever want to see it, just stop by or let me know.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Monica. John, seeing no other, no hands coming up from the commission, Andrew, would you check our audience to see if they have comments, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Once again, for anyone joining us via the Zoom meeting as an attendee, if you wish to make a public comment, please use the raise your hand feature to make yourself known and be recognized. I see no, no public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. Again, any other comments or questions for either Michael or Monica from the commission? Seeing none, I will take a motion on this topic.
Anyone?
Anyone want to make a motion?
Your Honor, I'd move that the Sturgis City Commission approve the agreement with the Sturgis Neighborhood Program with the purchase of 405 Wenzel in the amount of $8,571.99 as presented, and authorize City Manager Michael Hughes to sign all necessary documents.
Department of General Support.
Commissioner Burr, did you support that?
I did.
You did?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion made by Commissioner Mullins and support by Commissioner Burr. Roll call, please. Commissioner Littman.
Hi.
Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
And Mayor Heil. Yes, thank you all. The next item on our agenda is the Abbott Water Main easement, and Barry, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, so Abbott Laboratories is working with Pryon Newhoff, and we have an attendee, John Verplank, from Pryon Newhoff here. He has been working on the design of a, basically a parallel water main to the Abbott facility for their water needs. And he could explain that further if needed, but basically, Abbott Labs for, for more than 30 years has had a easement from their plant out to their well number five, and then eventually out to their Grim Road wells on airport property and West Lafayette right of way to, to get that water line back to their plant. And so they started doing this design for the parallel water main to create some redundancy in their facilities. The, it was noted that they couldn't find any easements for it. And I did some digging and we were able to track down where City Commission actually took action in 2005 to approve a bunch of easements. And then further back, when the well was originally built, and it's sometime in the 80s, the first well, well number five, which is on the screen, there were, there were easements with that. However, none of them were ever recorded. So we'd like to try to, to resolve that with tonight's agenda item. So the easement request that's being put before you is basically identical in size as the one that was approved in 2005. And so if you have any questions for, for John or myself, I'd be glad to try to answer them, but I, to let you know that we will be getting this recorded, assuming it gets approved.
And Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, John Verplank has been promoted to a panelist, so he's able to answer any questions you need to have.
Okay, Andrew, I do not have the picture of the, of our commissioner of the panels. Are we looking at something on somebody's screen? Thank you, I got it back. Thank you very much. Okay, see everybody here. Are either, are there any questions for Barry and/or John? And welcome, John.
Thank you.
Seeing no questions from the commission, are there anybody in the, is there anybody in our audience that has a question on this issue?
So once again, same procedure. If you do have a question, please use the raise your hand feature. I see no one with a question, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. Again, I will ask if there's any comments from the commission. Seeing none, I will take a motion on this issue.
Your Honor, this is Commissioner Burr. I move that the Sturgis City Commission approve utility easement agreement with Abbott Laboratories as presented.
I'll support that. Commissioner Klinger.
Thank you, sirs. I have a motion by Commissioner Burr and seconded by Commissioner Klinger. Roll call, please. Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Hi.
And Mayor Heil. Yes, thank you all. The next item on our agenda is Pleasant Avenue Lead Service Line Replacement Project, and Barry.
Thank you, Mayor, City Commissioners. So when it was decided that we were going to do the Pleasant Avenue Road Reconstruction Project, Public Services had to go out and determine what the water services were made of along the corridor that we are doing. They determined that six of the services were lead lines currently. And so based on the State of Michigan and Eagles' presentation of the new lead and copper rule revisions that occurred in 2018, we, as this, the water system have to replace not just the portion in the right of way, but all the way into the home on those six. Because the project is an M.LAP project, M.D. does not, within the agreement and contract for Pleasant, would not allow a contractor to work off-site. So we had to bid this separately. So we received these bids back, I believe, April 20th. We received two bids to do this replacement work. Those bid tabs are included in your packet. You also have a letter of recommendation of award from Fishback regarding the bids that were received. Northern Construction Services from Niles was the low bidder for an amount of $30,200. The engineer's estimate for this project was approximately $30,000, so it is pretty much in line with that. And the funding for this project will be out of the portion of the lead and service, the lead service line replacement budget we have for this year, which is 185,000. So there, take a portion of that, bless you.
Thank you.
So I, I'll be glad to try to take any questions you may have regarding this portion of the project at this time.
Commissioner Mullins.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe it's a question for Holly, possibly. We have 185,000 budgeted for the lead replacement lines this year. How much of that have we used so far? Do you, do you know that?
Um, I think that I, I printed out a list, you know, we, we've been replacing them as we go. And I think we've probably spent in, in staff time and that, we're probably approaching $90,000 of that.
90,000 has been spent, that was said?
Yeah.
Okay, so we should be in line then for the rest of the year and not have to worry too much about that. I'm, I'm guessing. And that's not including this 30,000 then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Good.
Yes, for Barry Cox, does that six service lines then fall into the percentage that we are required by the state to take care of during the course of the year? Isn't there a rule that says we have to do a percentage of service lines each year?
So there is a rule that says you have to do a percentage each year, and that, that percentage is 5%. However, because we do not currently have a all-encompassing assessment of how many lead service lines we have, and we won't, we, we're not obligated by the state to have that until January 2025, that 5% doesn't really begin until then. Now, the only benefit, well, we have to do the replacement if we're going to do the work to put the new water main in and put the new services in the right of way. We don't really get a, a benefit per se, Commissioner Good, because that, that percentage hasn't started yet, other than we know that we have six fewer than we would have already had if we had done nothing.
Okay, thank you, Barry.
Thank you. Skip, your hand is up here.
For Barry, on that Pleasant Avenue service, isn't that street being upgraded there? And I was wondering what the composition of the main feeder was? Pipe.
So the current water main is a four-inch water main, probably sand cast iron. And so it was under the existing roadway, which we, being that we're going to be reconstructing that road and placing a brick surface on it, was not a high desire to have an old water main over, well over 100 years old underneath that road. So that size has been upgraded to more appropriate size, which is an eight-inch line. And that line will be ductile iron, and then the services to each house in the right of way will be copper. Commissioner Littman.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, is there anybody, is there any other questions from the commission? If not, Andrew, would you see if our audience has somebody, if somebody in our audience has a question?
Sure, once again, anybody have a question for the commission, please use the raise your hand feature to be recognized. See no one, no one for public comment, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Andrew. Again, any other questions or comments?
I do have one, one other thing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I see Mr. Wiki has a question too. Go ahead, Barry.
To, this is kind of more directed at Commissioner Mullins in regards to, there is a $30,200 bid here. We did have to put together contract documents that were separate from that, that totaled, I believe, around $6,000. So just to let you know that there were other costs already involved in this, in addition to the 30,000. Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you, Barry. Commissioner Wiki.
Yeah, Barry, maybe I missed this in previous conversations, but the brick replacement, does that go down the length of the street, or is it a partial?
Okay, so Commissioner Wiki, the, the road, the, the brick replacement, they just finished today with taking up all the brick on the road. And it is going to basically be from the US 12 right of way, which is kind of the face of the buildings there, Corner Cafe and Craftsman's Daughter, all the way, all the way to Congress.
Okay.
And the one other, one other item on this is that the, the prime contractor for the streets project did submit the low bid, so it's going to be the same contractor, so working on both aspects, but under separate contracts, which helps with the coordination of getting services back online for each house.
And we are using the recycled bricks, correct, Barry? I think Mike told me that.
Yes, yes, we, they, we have a very high percentage of the bricks on Pleasant were salvageable, which is great. We do obviously have a pretty sizable stockpile from the salvaging operations that we did on South Nadaville over the course of three different projects, so we will have more than a sufficient brick to accomplish this project.
Thank you, Barry. Seeing no other comments or any hand raised up here, I will take a motion on this topic, this subject. Yep. Skip raised his hand. Can we unmute Skip?
Uh, so move, Your Honor.
All right, I have a motion. Who, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Was that, okay, I have a motion by Skip and second by Commissioner Mullins. Roll call, please. Ken's muted.
There we go. All right, so to be clear, the motion was to approve the bid for the Pleasant Avenue Water Service Replacement Project from Northern Construction Services Corporation in the amount of thirty thousand two hundred dollars. Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes. Thank you all. And the last item on our, oops, I make sure before I say that, oh, there's one more. The next item on our agenda is the Budget Amendments. Holly, you're up.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor City Commission. So in your packet, you have a couple of memos for budget amendments. The first one, you actually already approved last, at the last meeting. And that was to amend the budget in Fund Two-O-One for the Street Repair Fund in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars. I was going to try and share my screen, that did not work. Let's see, that work? Can you see that?
No.
Okay. Well, maybe I won't do that then. Anyway, well, you have in your packet the the memos for the budget amendment. So the first one, again, as I said, is to amend the budget for Two-O-One. You approved it last, at the last meeting to increase the expenditures for a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And the second memo, which is dated May seventh, is also included, and that's to request an amendment of a hundred and eighty-one thousand and fifteen dollars for, and what that has to do with, and this happens a lot when we do these street projects where, you know, we start construction in the summer and sometimes it carries over to the next year. Thanks, Andrew. So that's, that is the case also with the North Lakeview Project. The majority of the funds were expended last year, but the whole project was budgeted in the nineteen, or eighteen nineteen fiscal year. So in order to reflect those, those funds being spent this year, we need to do that amendment. And as I indicated at the last meeting, if Geraldine, if Geraldine, if that project were completed in this fiscal year, according to what's the funds that are budgeted, we'll only have about forty-five thousand dollars left in the fund balance in Fund Two-O-One. You know, in the past, historically, we have made transfers from the general fund into the municipal street fund to help fund projects. And ever since we have the dedicated street fund that was passed by the voters in the city, those are actually accounted for and those projects are accounted for in Fund Two-O-For. So it isn't, it isn't anything to really be concerned about that this fund is dwindling down. We had planned for that. Any questions about that before I move on to this other item, I guess? I don't need a separate motion, I just wanted to pause in case there were any questions.
Okay, and I cannot see if anybody has any questions at this point.
Okay.
No, nobody has their hand raised, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew.
Okay, and then the second, the other part of the, in the memo, it looks like more than it is, but really it's just to officially close Fund Two-Sixty-Two, which was formerly the Council for the Arts Fund, with changing, you know, changing the name for the Sturgis Young Auditorium to the Sturgis Young Council for the Arts or Center for the Arts, sorry, ooh, Sheila, sorry. The Sturgis Young Center for the Arts Fund, consolidating those two funds together, making them one name, one budget, one fund. This is just to officially close that fund and transfer the remaining fund balance that was left at the end of last fiscal year to actually do an operating transfer to close that into, again, the Sturgis Center, Sturgis Young Center for the Arts Fund, which is about thirty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars. Any questions?
Again, okay, there we go. Are there any questions here for Holly on this topic? At this point, I do not see any hands raised. Andrew, would you ask our audience if they have any questions?
Sure, once again, anybody in the audience who has a question or comment on this agenda item, please use the raise your hand feature. If you're joining us via Zoom, we will recognize you. No one wishing to be recognized, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. And seeing no other, no hands up by the commission, I will take a motion on this topic.
Your Honor, this Commissioner Burr, I move that the Sturgis City Commission approved the budget amendments as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Burr and second by Commissioner Klinger on this budget amendments. Roll call, please. He's muted again.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Aye.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes, and again, thank you all. The last item on our agenda is the Sturgis Young Center for the Arts Board Appointments. Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Although the Council of the Arts Fund may be dying, the Sturgis Young Center for the Arts keeps moving on, going to have a birthday this Friday. And so in order to move on, we've got four current vacancies on that board. And so we've had a couple people that have actually been attending meetings already. And it certainly have showed a great interest. And the Council of the Arts Board is recommending that Michelle Burr and Alex Shesky be appointed to the board. Maybe Commissioner Burr or someone else can tell you what positions they'll hold on that board, what the plan is. But we've got two other folks and as a reminder, at the next meeting, we'll hopefully get some applications over the next little bit and we'll be addressing all the boards and commissions, the reappointments and that kind of thing at the next meeting. If you have any questions, have to try and answer them.
Okay, Commissioner Burr, would you like to make a comment on us?
The possessions that they volunteered for were kind of pending to see if they were going to be appointed first, but I'm not sure which, which one that they were going to volunteer for. I don't know if.
I could help. I believe that Michelle Burr would be the Programming Event Committee. And then Alex Shesky was going to be the School Program Committee.
Thank you, Michael.
Takes better notes than I do.
Any questions here for Mr. Rhodes on this appointment, on these two appointments from the commission? John.
Thank you. Where are the term links?
I believe these are three-year terms.
Okay.
Yeah. So they're, these are filling some unexpired terms.
Okay. Andrew, once again, would you please see if our audience has any questions or comments?
Sure, one final time for our audience members, if you have any issue to make a comment on this agenda item, please use the raise your hand feature to be recognized. Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. Again, I will ask if there's any other questions or comments from the commission. Seeing none, I will take a motion on these appointments.
Vice Mayor is, Vice Mayor Good, I move the Sturgis City Commission appoint Michelle Burr and Alex Shesky to the Sturgis Young Center for the Arts Board through May twenty twenty-two.
Second that.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Good and a second by Commissioner Klinger to appoint. Roll call, please, sir.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman. Commissioner Lemon.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good.
Yes.
And Mayor Heil.
Yes. Okay, thank you all. We are at the point here of commissioners, commissioner and staff comments, if I can go through this here. I will start with staff first. Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I'd have right now, just getting a lot of stuff from the Bureau of Elections, an interesting mail election, I'm glad we did not have one. But one of the things that the Secretary of State did is mail absentee ballot applications to every single voter in the districts that had elections. There's, I guess I'd have to doubt that they're going to do that for the August election, but it is a possibility. But they are certainly encouraging as many people as possible to vote absentee as opposed to coming into the polls. How we actually conduct the election, I have no idea and a lot of things will be decided over the next several weeks. But just wanted to let you know that if you are talking to people and they're wondering if they can get an absentee ballot, then certainly just let us know and we're going to be happy and encourage people to vote in that method. I have to concern myself, one of the things is my election workers and who can actually work and be safe. So we'll, we'll be working on that over the next several weeks.
Thank you, sir. Again, I'm going off of my screen here. Safety, Public Safety Director, Director, Mr. Smith.
Nothing further, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Holly?
Nothing, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Thank you. Roger?
Just want you to know, I'm back from Florida, enjoying the nice weather here in Michigan and should be more available for whatever we need to do for the city. Thank you, Mayor. Other than that, I have nothing.
Thank you, and again, welcome back. John?
I have nothing, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Andrew?
Nothing this evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Will?
The only thing I have is the Sturgis students earlier on net metering. That item was one of the goals and objectives from the master plan that we just adopted. And, you know, it was one of the, it was, we kind of categorized them in numbers and it was a number two, so it was up there in priority for items to look at. So just so everybody's aware.
Thank you, sir. Your Honor? Michael?
I'm not sure if Mr. Pritchard is advocating for that because his son is, was on.
Feels like nepotism to me, I don't know.
All right.
Support.
Commissioner comments. Mr. Mullins?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Malone? She's muted.
Okay. I was just wondering if anybody knows that the Sturgis Neighborhood Program is going to offer the exterior painting program again this year? Or was that only a one-year thing?
I do know that.
Want me to answer?
Oh, go ahead, Will.
So, yeah, currently we just did an inventory of the paint. We just reordered some paint, some of the popular colors for last year. So we're starting to do the enforcement and getting the letters around so we can start to address that. So yes, we plan on doing that for the, this current year, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Malone. Commissioner Burr?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Littman?
Well, we had sunny skies mixed with snow, temperature was twenty-nine in Mesec. And the warmth coming out of Lansing was just about enough to fry me my hair. So I think they offset each other, but I'm glad to be back. I really appreciate Sturgis, I have a newfound love for this area. And Michael, you look great with that new hairdo. I didn't recognize the overgrowth or undergrowth is missing. But hey, buddy, you look good. All I got.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, Skip. Commissioner Klinger?
Nothing in that here.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Good?
Yes, my friend, thank you. First of all, I'd like to say that the Zoom meetings that we have, our virtual meetings, have a plus and a minus. The plus is that I can hear all of you when you speak, so that's a good thing. But the bad thing is that I miss the audience participation. It seems as if, now Andrew, you can answer this, do you know how many are out there?
Yes, so over the course of the meeting, we had upwards of six or seven people joining us via the Zoom meeting. It's down to three right now. And then on our YouTube stream, I think we were up around six or seven there as well. Right now, we currently have two. So it's decreased over the course of the meeting, but.
But we do have some participation throughout the course of the meeting.
Yes.
But they don't, they don't chime in. So I guess, at any rate, other than that, please feel free to practice civil disobedience, that's all, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, John. Commissioner Wiki?
Nothing for tonight, Mr. Mayor, thanks.
Thank you, sir. And John, on my screen, I can see the attendees that are doing the Zoom, but I can't do the Facebook. But I do see that there are people there and like Andrew said, I believe it was six to seven, it might have been eight at one time, that were attending the Zoom meeting. So again, I'd like to thank those people for logging in and attending this meeting. And I have no other further comments. On that note, we are adjourned. Good evening, all.